Good evening, everyone. With a quorum of members present, I'll call the Finance Committee meeting for Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 to order. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a joint item with our Finance Committee, so we'll pause for a second and let them come to order, and then we'll take our joint item first.
And with the appointed time here, I will call the HR Committee to order.
Okay, let the record show there is a quorum of both committees present. The summary for our joint item, I mean, in the interest of time, the two committees are meeting together tonight to discuss a grant that the Police Department has been offered by the Wisconsin DOJ to facilitate two beat patrol officers. And the caveat is that the HR Committee needs to decide whether or not it wants to add two positions. The Finance Committee needs to decide whether it wants to or is able to fund the match for the grant. The match is about $60,000, and we can talk about where we can source those funds from. Mary Ann has some ideas on that. I guess, why don't we, why don't we have Chief Bliven come up, oh, he's up already, and talk us through the grant a little bit, and then we can make those decisions?
Sure, and so the, I included the grant announcement and just a brief staff memo to you guys regarding the grant, so I think all the information's in there, essentially it's a three-year grant that's funded through the state budget, and we are eligible for it beginning in 2019, and then assuming it gets funded through the state budget again in 2020 and 2021. So, the grant amount is $121,000, and to be able to meet the minimum match requirements would be $40,000 now. If we wanted to take full advantage of the grant, we would hire two police officers, and then the total amount to fund two police officer positions is a little more than the grant amount plus the minimum match amount, so it would total $182,000 in total annually, with almost $61,000 in city funds for the match.
Okay. And does anyone have questions for Chief Bliven about the purpose of the Beat Patrol grant, or its expected outcomes, before we, oh, go ahead, Dennis?
Chief, when we're gonna hire, if we decide to hire two people of the human resources things, it's necessary, when will these people be on the street?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, we are in the middle of a hiring process right now, actually towards the end of a hiring process right now. We have two vacancies currently with two retirements in December, so we have four vacancies. We actually have six viable candidates out of that process right now, so we would be able to hire them right around the first of the year now, once they get through training is the question, and that's probably about May, by the time they get through training.
Okay, so they would be on the street in 2019 then, right?
Certainly, first half of 2019.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Gisselman?
Can you talk a little bit about the need, you know, we're stretched, I don't sit on finance, I sit on HR, can you talk a little bit to the need right now of the Wausau Police Department?
Yeah, so we have 76 sworn officers, you know, I think the committee is aware probably that we haven't been to full staff in, since probably 2014. We were continually behind the eight ball in terms of recruiting and the retirements and trying to fill that void. We have, so right now, we have 74 police officers. The reason for this grant, the way they allocate the money, is they look at all cities in Wisconsin over 25,000 population, and I think there's about 33 or 35 cities that meet that criteria, and then they look at the Uniform Crime Reports, which is our annual crime data that we report to the, to the state and to the, to the nation, to the federal government, and they look at the top 10 in terms of violent crime, and the top 10 are funded. And so, we were on the edge, the last three-year cycle, we didn't get this grant because we were outside of that top 10 in terms of violent crime, and we've unfortunately eked back into that top 10 in terms of violent crime, in terms of the most recent UCR data, so that tells me that, that we are in need of that. We have, you know, not just violent crime issues, but, you know, quality of life issues, drug issues, you know, we're constantly talking about neighborhood speeding complaints and vehicular issues, crashes that are occurring in our community, and, you know, I think we could probably have 10 more police officers and keep them busy. So, I definitely think there's a need for it, and, you know, at a cost of, you know, 25% match, I think is a, is a steal to be able to get a couple new police officers.
The, with regard to the purpose of the Beat Patrol program, is the goal of the program really to essentially entrench those officers that are assigned to that Beat Patrol into the areas that are most affected by that uniform crime number?
Really, the only thing that the announcement says is that they have to be Beat Patrol officers, so they have to work regular uniform patrol. It used to be called the Uniformed Patrol Officers Grant, and now it's Beat Patrol, which is essentially the same thing, so their function is primary generally, general police functions and police response, so.
Okay.
It just increases our ability to respond in a timely manner, and, you know, reduce response time and investigate crimes.
Do you plan on focusing their effort toward a particular program within the department or to a particular area where you figure a targeted approach is necessary?
Yeah, I think in 2019, my, my goal would be to have them get through training like Mr. Smith alluded to, and once they're through training, by the end of 2019, to kind of evaluate if they're best served in our Patrol Bureau, and potentially, they could be utilized in our Community Resource Unit, and we'd be more specific in terms of how, where they're going and what types of service they're providing. I think, I think the addition to our CRO unit would be, would be a good thing, and I think it would help the, the goal of the grant, which is to reduce violent crime in our community, so.
I guess that's what I was alluding to as far as a direction, because there's areas within the department that have been created in the last, you know, five, six years that have been tremendous in terms of their impact on crime and on neighborhoods, and that's why I was kind of hoping that we'd see a concerted approach with the addition of them to make an even larger impact than we've already made. Additional questions from either committee?
So, so, this grant could, you said you're, we're down, or you got two retirements, so you got two new positions to fill this coming year, so this grant could be applied to those two new hires when they come on board, or does it have to be two beyond that?
Yeah, the requirement from the grant is that they're new positions, so to replace a retired position, we couldn't use it for that. They have to be two new positions within the Police Department, so they'd have to increase our sworn staff levels.
Okay, so you're, okay, so you'd have, so basically, you're looking at four new officers this coming year?
Yeah, well, actually, six, because we have two vacancies, plus two more retirements, plus then potential for these two grant positions.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions from the HR Committee?
Well, then, after the time, after the three years, will these positions pretty much stay on the task that they were, or how do, you know, because then they become incorporated into the city of Wausau's budget, they become part of staff, so how does that work into the regular functioning of the Police Department?
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a fair question. I think, you know, first, I think would be a finance decision, come 2022, if we don't get the grant in 2022, which, you know, hopefully, we don't, because that means that we're outside the top 10 of violent crime, and we're doing a good job reducing the crime rate in our community. So then, it's a question of, do we want to, as a city, finance the two additional positions beyond that year, you know, and my hope would be that we do continue these positions, I think that's the purpose of the grant, is to generate additional police officer positions that are then maintained beyond, beyond the grant. If they are continued, you know, from a, from a resource deployment perspective, I think, you know, we would evaluate whether or not we need them in the Patrol Bureau to be able to do initial response to crime, or, like we discussed before, should they be a part of our Community Resource Unit, or used in some other fashion or manner. So, I, I'm not exactly sure where they would be deployed, I think, but I would hope that we'd maintain those positions and have them either in our Patrol Bureau or in our Community Resource Unit.
With regard to the finance aspect of it, I was just having a conversation before the start of the meeting with the HR Director, and, you know, I had asked her, I said, well, the issue really isn't so much trying to fund the match, it's what to do when the grant runs out. And that's true with any grant-funded position, and a suggestion that she had made from where she had worked previously was that often when that happens, and a grant runs out, you have to decide if there's still a need first, and if there is, you either have to find funding, or find perhaps partner funding, you know, maybe different grants, maybe different support within the community, and if that isn't an option, then financially, you'd have to decide whether to keep the two positions or stop filling them, but she said for ease of that process, sometimes what happens is, within public safety, they're always, almost always recruiting and hiring, there's always retirements, there's always a cycle, and so, you know, rather than just say, you know, the funding for your two positions has expired, you know, two positions eliminated, you would just likely opt to not backfill those positions as you're hiring to fill from the bottom. So, it's manageable, but it's not optimal, but it, it would be possible, she said.
We've never said no, you know, on those requests, you know, I don't think this is, you know, we've, we've always worked them into the, worked them into staff, and I think in three years, it becomes difficult for them, for us to say, you know, something else, but, you know, I think that they would be at the end of three years, and if we would get the grant, or in three years, those would be an additional two, you know, two more officers with the next wave of, of grants.
Well, so, we used to have, we had this grant for nine years, we didn't get the most recent three-year cycle, and it was, we just maintained, we increased our police staffing by two officers, and then each of the three-year cycles, we just maintained those two officers on our, on our payroll.
I think it was actually three, because if you recall, we lost that funding at the same time that I had redone the garbage and saved $600,000 a year, so the Police Department basically consumed all of our savings in the garbage.
It was three.
So, that's, you know, so we were able to retain those positions because of that garbage savings, but we would have been in quite a predicament if we hadn't had that savings in garbage.
Luckily for us, in the past also, over a cycle of time, when we created the School Resource Officer Expansion, the schools were willing to partner fund, and they've been perpetually partner funding with us to keep, keep those two extra positions, and then when we added some to the CRO unit to attack drugs and blight, we were able to get some partner funding from one of the foundations that, you know, for three years, with the agreement that when that runs out, that we'd continue to keep the positions, and we've managed to do that, but those are decisions that we'd have to make, you know, knowing on the front end exactly what happens when the grant runs out, I think we could go into it with our eyes open if you guys decide to move forward.
And, you know, it was nice that we had the support from the foundation, but it just added to our burden when that funding ran out, because we had not only the federal share or state, whatever you want to call it, but we had our local share too, that we had to come up with, so.
It was a lot of money.
It was a lot of money.
It was, but they made a tremendous impact, I mean, when you see the roomful of evidence that they've taken off the streets, that's, that's a whole lot of work that they managed to get done in the community during the time they had the grant and after, so. I guess I'll yield for a second to the HR Committee, because the Finance Committee has no decision to make if HR doesn't add the people.
All right, any more, any more questions from HR? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I approve.
Okay.
You need a second?
And a second, yeah, I'll take a second, okay. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the addition of two new officers for the Beat Patrol Grant, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
And it carries.
So, so with the creation of two positions, the Finance Committee needs to figure out how to fund the match, which is approximately $60,000, and I think Mary Ann had some ideas for where that funding could be adjusted. They do have some profitability, I believe, in the Animal Control Program that we perhaps could use, or repurpose to get where we need to go for 2019 without adding additional levy dollars, is that correct?
Right, and another option, you know, I've been thinking about this more, another option, we had bumped up the overtime in the Police Department during the 2019 budget process by about $50,000, based on, I guess, some concerns from PD that they had expressed. I mean, that would be another option to do a share and take some of it out of that overtime, you know, in thinking if you take it all out of the Animal Control, then in the 2020 budget, you're going to be looking for that full $60,000. If, you know, you would think that by hiring two new officers, that that would help control overtime a little bit, and so perhaps we wouldn't need that $50,000 extra, and we'd want to, you know.
Well, right, and we always could go back and find a way to reinstate that overtime funding if necessary, if you have a major crime that's draining resources and time, where you just, totally unexpected overtime, it's unavoidable, that's a discussion that we'd be willing to have if we needed to shift something in the budget if, you know, if the worst happens and we end up with something where you have to divert round-the-clock resources to it, but I guess, did, were you recommending that we do it from, all of it from overtime, or half and half?
Well, I think you should at least do half of it from overtime, at a minimum.
Okay, so $30,000 from each?
Sure, we could do it that way.
What are your thoughts, Finance Committee, $30,000 from Animal Control, $30,000 from overtime?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, that, Mary, Mary always comes up with creative ways to get good projects accomplished, and I hate to see grit money laying on the table unclaimed, and so this is wise, and it also, we have to also remember that when you have enough people, I don't know if you ever have enough, but when you have enough staff, it alleviates the stress on an understaffed department, and there is definite value in that, and we don't want to ever get to that point. So, I would like to make that motion, Madam Chair, based on those suggestions.
Okay. To accept the grant, fund the two positions with $30,000 from Animal Control and $30,000 from Overtime Budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there a second to Mr. Nutting's motion? Second by Kelbach? Further discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll pause for a second, so HR can adjourn.
The vote?
Four to zero.
Four to zero, yeah. Entertain a motion to adjourn the HR Committee. Motion by Neil, seconded by Gisselman, all those, oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you in the corner of my eye, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? It carries, HR Committee's adjourned.
Okay. Thank you, HR Committee, for coming in early to work us through this special item. With the notice requirements on the grant, there wasn't time for all of our meetings to get shoehorned into their normal time, so, thank you, everyone. Item number two on finance, we have an action-packed agenda here too, because Council is starting at 6:00 tonight, based on a conflict with County Board's budget meetings, so item two on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our previous meetings, 10:22, 10:23, and 11:07 of 18. Are there any corrections necessary to any of those minutes? If not, a motion to approve is appropriate. Motion by Kelbach, is there a second? Second by Nutting. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, minutes are approved. Item number three, and three, four, and five are kind of all related, is, the first one is discussion impossible action regarding a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $5,480,000 of General Obligation Promissory Notes, Series 2018A, and I guess I'll read them, well, let's take them one at a time, I guess. Welcome.
Thank you. Action-packed means get moving?
Sort of.
Is that what that means? Okay, I'll try. Oh, good evening, Phil Costin with Ellers, nice to be back in Wausau. We have three items for you, and Mary Ann was kind enough to provide you hard copies of what was also sent via email to you. Maybe for the newer members, a refresher of why you get this so late. Last month, you authorized the sale of these three separate bond issues. After that occurs, there's a number of steps that take place. One, we have a rating call with Moody's Investor Service, we have the rating reports, and here, we'll go through that in a little bit of detail. Two, we then take bids this morning on all three of the debt issues at 10:00 AM. We compile that information, that's when, that's what's in the packets, we bring that to you tonight for approval, and then if it's approved tonight, we convey that to the winning bidders on the bonds, so they, the next day, have the ability to, to sell those bonds in the secondary market. They don't want to hold those bonds for periods of time, because there's a chance the market could move, so that's why you get this kind of a last moment. So, I'll go through 2018A, and then pause, and we can go through each one of them if you would like.
Sure, that would work.
Okay, I'll go through 2018A, there is a packet in front of you, I know there's a lot of information in there, I'm going to try to summarize it for you, and then to let you know that, what, what the other information in the packet is. On the first page in, there is a sale day report, and that report does attempt to give a, kind of a quick summary of everything that's occurred between authorizing the sale and where you are today. This, or 2018A issue is a general obligation note, it will be financed for 10 years, it will finance $2 million of normal capital projects in the city that you have identified, and then also identified are Thomas Street and Calhoun, I'm sorry, not Calhoun.
Callan.
Callan, thank you, Callan Street in Tax Increment District Number 6. The, we went through a rating process, Mary Ann participated in that with me, the city's rating was affirmed at AA3. On this issue, we had four bids, and I'll go through those summary bids in a little bit, the winning bidder was Robert W. Barrett and Company out of Milwaukee, they bid, the low bid, at 2.8223%, there were three other bids that were received, as high as 2.9347%. The difference between the low and high being about $30,000. The bid was received with what's called a premium bid, meaning that they actually provide more funds than, than requested. What we do with those, those funds are two purposes, one, we can retain some money for projects, I'll talk about that in more detail, that's about $74,000, and then the remaining funds go into what's called a Debt Service Fund to make interest payments in 2019 that will help 2019 budget, when it all comes down to it. In the, the next couple of pages, through the actual bid tab, you can see that we had the four bids that were received. The first page, which is the next page in, is Robert W. Barrett's bid, and all the different people that they have partnering with them, and it's quite a laundry list of probably 20-plus firms that they have partnered with, so they're the, the lead, and then this, under the syndicate, or all the rest that participate in it. The rates that were received on the far right-hand side, true interest rate of 2.8223%. On the next page, we also received bids from FDN Financial Capital Markets in Memphis, Tennessee, Bernardi Securities in Chicago, and Hutchison Shockey Early in Chicago as well, so those are the four bids that were received, even though we only have four bids, we probably have 25 different firms that actually participated in this bid or the syndicate. The result of this, again, is that we're able to fund all the projects identified, we actually end up in a situation where the, we end up with about $74,000 more in project costs that are either allocated to your 2019 capital projects and/or to Callan or Thomas Streets, your preference and how those monies are allocated, and then again, Debt Service Reserve Fund funds, that got $146,000, that will be attributed to 2019 bond payments, and a little bit in 2020 as well. When you add up the interest costs versus what we had projected, and you look at the retained funds and the Debt Service Fund, you're about $33,000 to the better on this issue than what we had projected. And to say the market has been a little bit in flux is probably the understatement, so we're feel pretty good about that we came that close. There is a rating report, which is the last couple of pages, on that rating report, I'd like to point out a few items that they have identified, they've changed the, the look of their ratings a little bit, but under ratings rationale, I'll just read that, because I think that is really their basis, the primary basis for their rating. AA3 rating reflects sound financial operations and reserves despite continued advances to deficit tax increment district funds, I'll comment on that, in that your practice has been for newer districts to advance fund to be reimbursed back once the increment is in place, that's been the city's practice for years, and they're just acknowledging that. The rating also reflects the city's moderately sized tax base, with below-average resident income indices, moderate pension burden, and an elevated debt burden, which is expected to remain high given the debt issuance. So, in Wisconsin, you will tend to see that same language, no matter if you're in Milwaukee, Wausau, or some smaller community, and that's because in Wisconsin, you can only issue debt under a couple of different purposes, general obligation, which is what's happening here, or essential revenue bonds, such as water revenue, sewer revenue, those type of bonds, we have very few options in Wisconsin, so when they compare Wisconsin credits to other states around the nation, the debt burden tends to be a little bit higher, because we can't, we don't do sales tax base bonds and those types of things, so that, that tends to be the factor. So, what can lead to an upgrade, material expansion of the tax base, and moderation of the city's debt burden, repayment of outstanding fund balances that are, that are being, coming from, back from the tax increment districts, and the downgrade, similar anticipated increases in the city's debt burden, declines in tax base, and/or decline in reserves and liquidity, that's their number-one issue, what do you have in your fund balance, your rainy day fund going forward. So, steady as a go, Alice Joke Moody's is great, and quick to act negatively, but they were going to be very slow in moving the ball forward upward, but I think the city's on the right track, and in time, we'll be able to experience an upgrade.
I would just add one thing, if you look at page four of that sale document, you can see that about 63% of this issue is actually going to be paid off in seven years versus 10 years, because if you recall, TID 6 is looking at expiration or maturity of the district itself, and so we're able to retire that debt quicker, because that district is a very healthy district, so that's a good thing, because it will limit the amount of interest that the residents have to pay on this issue.
Very positive. Let's vote on these each separately as we, as we conclude them, so, do we have a motion, then, to authorize the borrowing as outlined by Phil in item number three?
So, move.
Motion by Nutting, is there a second? Second by Martins, further discussion or questions? Go ahead, Dennis.
This, according to the documents, this, this money is being borrowed for a number of different projects, streets, parks, and so on, do we have a breakdown as to how much of this is going to be spent on streets, how much in parks, and so on?
I did provide that at a previous meeting, I can certainly send that to you again.
This is 2018's borrowing, right?
Right, it would have been adopted in the 2018 budget, but I can certainly have that for you before Council.
All right, well, it's not a big deal, a couple other questions, the debt service on this borrowing going to be paid for by the revenue generated in TID 6?
Right, 63%, the $3,440, which is shown on page four, and its interest will be paid by the TID 6, and then the $2,342, which is the cap, general capital projects would be paid for out of the debt service levy.
All right, and I assume that TID 6 is not underwater, then?
Correct.
Okay.
It's one of the best ones.
Yep.
All right, so with a motion and a second on the floor, then, for this first item, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Let's take our next item, which is discussion impossible action regarding resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $5,55,000 Water System and Sewer System Revenue Bond Anticipation Notes, Series 2018B.
All right, thank you. Again, 10 o'clock today, we took bids on this issue, just as a refresher, maybe this is really primarily for upgrades to the water, to the water and sewer systems, the ultimate takeout of these will be a safe drinking water loan and a clean water fund loan.
Yep.
That the city is applying for, this is really interim financing until the takeout of those loans. So, it's a relatively short issue that is due to mature in 2020, with the takeout of those two permanent financing options, the clean water and safe drinking water loan programs. So, here too, we had bids taken today, 10 o'clock, we had three bids, Oppenheimer out of Philadelphia was a low bid at 2.57%, the high bid was 322, $45,000 difference between the high and low bid. Here, we have about 63,000 of additional funds available for projects related to, again, the water and sewer utility, and the, little different here, we actually have what's called a MIG rating, under Moody's Investor Service, when they look at rating short-term issues, five years or less, they'll do what's called a MIG rating, and this received a MIG rating one, which is the highest rating for a short-term issue. They, they base that on a couple of things, and it's in the report, but one of them is, what is the, the likelihood of the takeout of, of this issue? And the safe drinking and clean water fund loan programs are, are safe bets, they, they look at it as, as a, as a permanent financing solution for this, so that's one of the main things they look at. If you look at the bids on the second page, the winning bidder, again, Oppenheimer out of Philadelphia, Hutchison Shockey out of Chicago was, was the cover bid, and Jeffries out of New York, which we don't see very often in Wisconsin, was of New York, which we don't see very often in Wisconsin, was the third bid, way off the market, 3.22%. Here, too, the dollar amount of the bonds issued did not change, but we have some additional project funds available that will be able to fund projects in the interim until the permanent financing is taken out, and that's that $63,000 I referenced. The overall cost is less than what we had projected here as well. The MIG rating, if you look at that, it's towards the back of the packet. It's really just a two-page report. As I indicated, the rationale here when they looked at it is that the revenue band, which stands for bond anticipation note, reflects the system's long history of market access, strong takeout management and alternative plans, solid liquidity, credit characteristics inherent in water and sewer systems revenue rating. So they view this as a very high credit. That's why the MIG one rating. Not risky insofar as the ultimate takeout being the two loan programs run by the State of Wisconsin, Department of National Resources, and the Department of Administration. So that is the second issue, again, right in line with what we identified for the rate, and a very strong MIG one rating for the utilities.
Okay. With that, do we have a motion to approve borrowing Series 2018B? Motion by Nutting. Is there a second? Second by Kelbock. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed? That motion carries as well. Item number five is discussion and possible action regarding a resolution authorizing the issuance of $8,15,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes and the issuance and sale of $8,15,000 taxable note anticipation notes, Series 2018C, in anticipation thereof.
Thank you. One note of correction. If this is approved and to move forward, the amount to be issued is $8,10,000. It was reduced by $5,000. So any motion and second should be made at the lower amount. This was, again, taken out at 10 o'clock today. We took bids, the same MIG one rating, even though it's a different purpose. It's the MIG one rating. The purpose here really is Wausau Chemical Project, and will be ultimately, this will be taken out and financed at a later date. And the revenues to be paying this back will be from TIDS 11 and 12, once there is an increment stream in place to be able to refinance this debt. We had low bid from Oppenheimer at 3.57%, a high bid at 375, difference of $60,000. No additional project funds here, but rather, we reduced the amount of the issue by $5,000. The bids are on the second page that were received, again, the same top two, Oppenheimer at 3.57%, Hutch Shockey Earl at 373, and then Northland Securities out of Minneapolis at 3.75%. This issue, unlike the last one, which will be maturing in 2020, has the ability to stay out there through 2023. We have a call date so that you could refinance this anytime after 2021, so '21, '22, or '23. You have some flexibility when you do refinance this issue. We have put together, again, the finance plan that's laid out in here. All of this is expected to be, again, paid for with TID 11 and 12, non-leveed dollars. So there is a fold-out page in here. You'll see that. That's kind of a longer finance plan that we've been working on with the city. That fold-out page kind of shows you ultimately what we're trying to get to, and that is a Debt Service levy that remains flat going forward and/or dropping. And again, the intent here is to have this entire Debt Service paid back with non-levee dollars through the tax increment district. The MIG one rating looks very similar to what was identified for the AA3-rated general obligation note, the 2018A issue. And here, too, they focus a great deal on the ability to refinance this debt. The city has plenty of borrowing capacity to refinance this debt, so they view this as a high credit. MIG one rating similar to the high credit of the water and sewer utility.
With that summary, then, do we have a motion to approve the borrowing to correct the amount of $8,10,000 under Series 2018C? Motion by Martins. Is there a second? Second by Kelbock. Further discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we'll record one no. That takes care of the borrowing for the 2018. Thanks, Phil. I'm going to kind of skip. I'm going to hold up on item number six for a second, which is discussion and possible action regarding the 2019 budget, just so we can, in the interest of time, kind of hammer out a few of these other things we have on our plates. Item number seven is discussion and possible action regarding the City of Wausau Cellular Phone Provider RFP responses received from Cellcom and Sprint. Review of proposals and a recommendation. You'll notice in your packets that there were two bids on this. It appears that, based on the staff review of the two bids, that the recommendation is to accept a contract offer by Cellcom, which seems to have had a positive experience with the city and better pricing. We have the rep with us from Cellcom this evening, if there's questions from her, oh, from IT, rather, sorry, who conducted the RFP and the contract. Do we have questions for CCITC? If not, is there a motion to accept the recommendation from staff to accept Cellcom?
Make that motion.
Is there a motion by Kelbock, second by Nutting? Oh, motion by Nutting, second by Kelbock, sorry. Backwards. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight is discussion and possible action on intergovernmental humane officer service agreement between the City of Wausau and the Everest Metro Police Department from January 1, 2019 to December 31, 2019. You'll recognize that we've been sharing humane officer services for a number of years now, since the inception of the program with Everest Metro, which has been successful. And periodically, we do come to renew that contract. We're to that point. And you have a copy of the intergovernmental cooperation agreement and the contract in your packets. Questions with regard to the contract? Doesn't appear to be any different than what we've had before.
Yeah, I guess the only question I had is, was there any substantial change in previous years? But it sounds like it's not.
It looks like it's substantially the same. They've not noted any changes in here from what we've been operating under.
If there's no change, then I'll make a motion.
Okay. A motion to... Oh, here comes Chief Bliven.
Oh. Well, I'll wait.
I was just going to say, there has been no change. It's been just a renewal with the same language.
Okay.
Between the two of us, we keep her awfully busy. So...
Indeed.
So a motion by Martins to renew the contract. Is there a second? Second by Kelbock. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed? That motion carries. Item number nine is discussion and possible action on terminating emergency medical service contract with the Village of Brokaw. We've got that in our packets as well. I assume that we're terminating the contract because Brokaw no longer exists, as said, and the city attorney's nodding in the back. So this is kind of a housekeeping matter. I think we do have an EMS contract with the Village of Maine, correct? So that takes the place of this. Do we have a motion, then, to terminate the contract?
I make that motion.
Motion by Kelbock, second by Nutting. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed? That motion carries as well. Item number 10 is discussion and possible action regarding legislative resolution urging the FCC to continue to require cable operators and other video providers to provide channel space and transmission of local PEG access channels at no charge to municipalities. We've been having this discussion internally a little bit because with new legislation expected to come down from the federal level, there's always a push by providers to want to charge municipalities for that channel space are not offered at all. And so this resolution would really be sent to our representatives to encourage that the FCC continue to require that the programmers continue to offer not only channel space but not charge fees to municipalities for that space. If anyone has questions about that, otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve.
I got one quick question, I guess.
We've got the city attorney with us. She's been working on this, so...
So I think I understand this, but we still collect the franchise fees if we decide that, or if things happen that we can no longer carry the public access channels. It would be that we would eventually would be charged for carriage.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay.
Right. So our hope is to avoid that entirely.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I have total agreement to this, so I'll make a motion to approve this, you know, for the resolution.
Okay. Do we have a second to Mike's motion? Second by Nutting. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed? That motion carries. Item number 11 is discussion and possible action regarding the meal per diem policy.
Yep. If you recall, prior to the change this summer, we had not made any changes to our meal reimbursement policy in probably 12 years. And I had done a survey of other government units in the area, and all of them differentiated between in-state and out-of-state. But the school district also included Milwaukee in their out-of-state, so you get a little bump up.
Okay.
So, of course, you know, not having really thought this, some of the implications of this change through, we immediately got questions because CivMIC, which is where a lot of our employees are going to training, is actually right outside of the City of Milwaukee proper. So then they're like, okay, do I get my in-state per diem, or do I get the out-of-state Milwaukee per diem? So I guess, you know, it would be helpful to either expand the Milwaukee component to include all of Milwaukee County, or maybe just strike Milwaukee altogether and just have in-state, out-of-state. Like I said, the school district was the only one that had included Milwaukee in. Prior to using these local government units, we had used this IRS high-low method, which is they establish two per diem rates, and then they publish a calendar or a listing annually of what are considered high-cost cities in the United States. And so then, if you traveled to that high-cost city like Los Angeles, you would get extra. And no cities in Wisconsin are considered in the high-cost area from an IRS perspective. So I think that you would be safe in going either one. I just think right now, it just adds, makes it confusing to the employees, and then, you know, I don't know.
Right. No, it is harder to manage. So what are your thoughts, committee? Do you want to go to Milwaukee County or just move Milwaukee out of the equation entirely? Go ahead, Mike.
Initially, I was thinking that you might want to... Initially, when we thought about this, I thought of Milwaukee as encompassing Milwaukee County. But now, on second thought, you know, now I'm thinking, well, now what about Waukesha County? And now what about Washington County? Well, because just, you know, there could be a conference in Waukesha just as easily as there could be in Milwaukee. So I would tend to just have an in-state and out-of-state rate, just to make it easy.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Is that a motion to remove Milwaukee from the out-of-state equation?
Since I'm on a roll, I'll make a motion.
There's a motion from Martins. Is there a second? Do we have a second? Second from Kelbock. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed? That motion carries. Look, everyone's meeting reminder just went off. Did we hear that all at once? Interesting. Item number 12 is discussion and possible action on a budget modification to purchase a Kubota RTV with a sander for sanding sidewalks. You've got some information on this in your packet as well. The city obviously takes care of an awful lot of sidewalk, and so this would help them in that. They sold a piece of equipment, and they'd like to use some of the funds that they've gleaned from that sale to purchase this item. Do you have questions for the director? If not, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Kelbock. Is there a second? Second by Nutting. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed? So Kubota RTV approved. Let's see here. Item 13, because we've got closed session on this and council on the horizon, I'd like to take that first. And if we have any time left, we'll come back to the 2019 budget discussion. If not, we'll hold that for a future meeting. Item 13, discussion and possible action on accepting counteroffers for the properties on Phase 2 of the Thomas Street Reconstruction Project, parcel 28 at 101 East Thomas and parcel 41 at 130 East Thomas. Do we have open session material for this yet? Okay. We'll show that there is not. The committee will deliberate on these in closed session, and if their will is to accept the offers, then we may act on them in open session after. Somebody want to read the closed session motion for us? Go ahead, Mr. Nutting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to go into closed session pursuant to 19.85, sub-paragraph 1, paragraph E of the Wisconsin statutes for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session on accepting counteroffers for properties on Phase 2 of the Thomas Street Reconstruction Project, parcel 28, 101 East Thomas Street, and parcel 41, 130 East Thomas Street.
Is there a second for Mr. Nutting's motion? Second from Smith. Roll call vote. Kelbock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Nutting?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Committee will convene in the maple room for closed session, and will return to this chamber if open session action is necessary. Let the record show that the Finance Committee has returned to open session. It might be helpful to just move out of the way. We're on TV. The Finance Committee... Excuse me? The Finance Committee is still in session, folks? The Finance Committee has reconvened in open session. There is no action to take place from the closed session. Item number six on our agenda will be deferred to the next meeting in the interest of time so that the city council can get underway here at 6:00. I'll entertain a motion from Finance to adjourn. Motion by Kelbock. Is there a second? Second by Nutting. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed? Council will convene here then in five minutes. Thank you.